I'm taking a Policy Leadership class. That one is one of my favorites. And then also I'm taking a Humanities class. It's like just required. But I'm also looking at doing the night classes at Dr. Stine as well. Because they have an accelerated access program. And through that I can probably, I could do research. My city, so Dr. Stine has some great research programs for a lot of the sexual sciences. So I have to apply for that soon though, because I'm already almost at...
You have to apply for that as well? You're starting?
Well, for the accelerated program. Because I'm already, so by credit hours, I'm considered a junior. Because I'm at seventy-seven credit hours. And I have to apply for that before I hit ninety. So I have to, I'm getting my application ready. I have to go to...
Vanderbeek and YT. Don't ask me. Looks difficult to say on a page. So we call her YT. I'm Jennifer Ratcliffe. I am one of the co-chairs of the Social Justice Team. But I wanted, before we start, I wanted to tell you what we're doing with the kids next door. Because this is an election year. It's really important for us to focus on this generation and the coming up generation. And so what we have been orchestrating with the Playscape group and some volunteers is that the kids right now are going to have an election. So they too will know what's happening. Their name for the Playscape. The skip. The kids, kids from Primo have already had, from Primo have already had their, had made their selection, which right now is what we call, what do you call it? Early voting. So there are people who have early voted already. And so today, the other kids are going to have a primary where they will choose two or three, and then they will choose the final one. So at some point this afternoon, they will come in, they will tell us what their election was, what the choice was. I'm gonna let Dave take the podium. I see that YT is here. But I also wanted to let you know that up here are QR codes for anybody that has not checked their voter registration. It is really important that you do that, especially if you haven't voted in the last couple of elections. Make sure that you've got your right confidential information. So anybody, if you want to take a sample, you can take it home or take...
Michelle's been active in social justice and Joan Rossi too for organizing this. So, we have three speakers today, as Jennifer was saying. Our first speaker is our very own Troy Vanderbeek here, who is a second-year student at Georgia State. Lifelong UU. He's majoring in economics with a minor in public policy and another minor in planning and economic development. And I can't wait till you're thirty-five and we can vote for you for president. Because he's taking a lot of stuff. He plans on applying for grad school, actually, this semester, actually, because he's technically kind of a junior. So after that, we'll have JP, Jennifer Philippi, talking with us. She ran for Count Fulton County Commissioner earlier this year. And she's also very active in a lot of, sponsoring a lot of political candidates. Actually Senator Ossoff will be at her house this week. If you want to get with Jennifer, we can, that event is on what day? Thursday? Thursday at five-thirty? Talk with Jennifer about that. So she's gonna be speaking. And she's been really active in politics since I've been here, and in earth ministry especially. And we have YT here with us today. YT Bell, correct? And I got your, you didn't have your bio on the Southern Poverty Law Center, but I found it on LinkedIn. So she is with the Southern Poverty Law Center, and they're opening a Georgia office. Badly needed. Thank you for doing that. Thank you for doing that. So she's a native Georgian and also graduated from Georgia State University with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice, political science, master's in social work and public administration with a focus on economic development and planning, which is exactly what he's doing. And you are an associate professor at Georgia State as well. So you guys will definitely get to know each other. She's a councilwoman at the city of Clarkston, Georgia, and I guess you don't, you do not sleep, I don't think. So, well, thank you all, thank you for coming. And we're gonna start off with Troy.
Good morning. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Troy Vanderbeek. Been a member of this congregation for forever. But thank you, Dave, for the introduction. I'm a current second year at Georgia State. I live downtown, after growing up in Forsyth County, thirty minutes north of here. So I am an economics major, but I really want to focus on more of the public policy side of economics, as well as like, you know, planning and economic development. And Georgia State has such a great program for that. I'm also a member of the Student Government Association at Georgia State. It's such a great program. We're doing a lot of great things there, which I will talk about in just a minute. But what really got me interested in mainly like local government was during high school, like I grew up, like we, I was at the firsthand of experiencing a lot of the book banning that was happening across the country. So Forsyth County, if you guys don't know, I think it was around two years ago, decided they wanted to ban, ago, eight of the thirteen books were unbanned. Thank you, Department of Justice, for sending, for threatening Forsyth County. So that was great, but we're still, Forsyth County still faces a large problem with a lot of their education. They do have a great education system, but they still face a lot of problems. So at Georgia State, as a member of the Student Government Association, one of the current projects we're working on, which I'm super involved with, is we actually had a meeting last week with the Liquor License Review Board in Atlanta. So downtown, next to Georgia State, there used to be a racetrack gas station. And they had a liquor license, and they were able to sell alcohol and tobacco products. And they were right next to all of the student housing. So majority, like underage students, lived right next to this. So it caused a lot of problems with off-campus people coming and loitering on campus. And then also, we had a decent amount of gun violence that occurred at the gas station. So last year, I think there was maybe, there was three people who lost their lives at the gas station in the span of nine months. And then I think there were four or five other people who were very injured by gunfire near the gas station. Most of them were not students, but a lot of them were younger people of the community. So Racetrack decided to close their doors after the most recent shooting, which happened in the middle of the day, which was awful. So we were very happy that they decided to close their doors. But recently BP has been trying to buy the property, and they really want to get a liquor license, because that's where a large amount of their profits come from. So we, on last Tuesday, went to the Liquor License Review Board as a student government and spoke out against them giving them the liquor license. And they were very surprised. They were very surprised on how this racetrack had impacted a lot of students' lives. A lot of students feared for their safety already. Like downtown Atlanta, as much as it does have a bad stigma, there is a certain amount of violence that does occur, especially right next to campus. But we were very happy that they, initially, they were just gonna accept it. And like, you know, that's what they just do with businesses. They just accept it and let it go. But they were really happy that we came and voiced our opinion. So they put a hold on accepting the liquor license application. And they pushed it back to another meeting later in October. So we're hoping we can get even more students. Because it was, it was a small group of students, but we were still very vocal, because a lot of it was student government members. But we're so, we're running a campaign to get more students involved, have a little student town hall, to get more students to be able to come and tell their stories about how that violence has impacted their personal lives. And then we're also doing a lot of other work on safety and infrastructure downtown. A lot of that is in the works with our administration. Our administration has been doing some great things. But I'm so excited to see what our organization can do and the future of downtown. Thank you.
Then I would like to, because I have run out of time and wrote this kind of last minute, but I want to make sure that I hit all these talking points. And so today, I'm having run from office, as Dave mentioned. And I just want to point out some things that I've learned, that I've observed through that process, and the things that I'm continuing to see as I volunteer for other campaigns and work closely with them. I ran for Fulton County Commissioner. When I started running that race, I recognized that people have no idea what a county commissioner does. So I spent a lot of time explaining what that role is and why it's important. And having that conversation is very difficult in Fulton County, because South Fulton's needs and interests are very different than North Fulton. And a large majority of the budget for Fulton County, it does go to services that South Fulton is more interested in, right? So you have the challenging job of trying to get people interested in that, that role, you know, trying to help get you elected, and getting them to be like, oh yes, this matters, seeing at, are the ones, the roles and positions that are like more glamorous in the news, the ones that you're seeing more often. So national issues dominate the political conversations, but so much of what really impacts our day-to-day life is happening at the local level. It's not at the national level, right? So for instance, a couple of weeks ago, the Fulton County Board of Commissioners voted to increase the miller rate. I mean, how many people even know that? Is opposed by many environmental organizations? And it's also more costly than other means that we have of generating energy. Is Georgia power gonna come back and ask the Public Service Commission again for another rate hike? Do you know how many rate hikes they've had recently? Do you know where that money is going? Do you even know? I mean, how many people even understand that there is a public service commission? I mean, you wouldn't be talking about it because we haven't had an election in so long. This election has been held up by lawsuits. The last two elections in 2022 and 2024 have had to be postponed and pushed off because of this lawsuit. We're finally gonna get a chance to vote for a public service representative in 2025? And the way this works for public service is that they have to run from the district they live in, but it's a statewide election, right? This is the whole reason for the lawsuit. It is crazy, yeah. So even when we're aware of ballot positions, we often don't know much. Ends up happening is people vote for the top name on the ballot. That can account for as much as ten percent of the votes going to a person. I lost by ten percent, by the way. Just saying. And, and then we have the tendency, if we don't know the candidates, we want to try to show our, our social justice compassion, right? We're gonna vote for the woman or the name that sounds... Then we end up in situations like what happened right over here in District 11, where we had Antonio Daza beat by Katie Stamper. And if you guys have followed this story, you've learned that Katie Stamper is a historically Republican voter. She grabs a Republican ballot, Republican elections, and what she stands for does not align with most Democratic values. And now the choice in that election is the incumbent Republican or Katie Stamper. I don't think that's what those voters had in mind, right? But they didn't know who they were voting for. The next issue comes when people either, Democrats are far more likely than Republicans to vote all the way down the ballot when they don't know somebody. So there's those of us who, maybe we're educated, there's those of us who go and grab a name that we like, and then there's those of us who go, well, you know what? I don't know that position, so I'm just not gonna vote. Republicans tend to vote all the way down the ballot, just choosing and are whether they know it or not. So we're doing our candidate-aided on all of those down-ballot candidates, right? Around two-thirds of eligible voters participated in the 2020 presidential election. That was up from fifty percent voter participation in former elections. In my election, the primary, just, that just passed this year, less than ten percent of the population showed up to vote. Yeah. So if we want the best candidates to advance the general election, we must show up for primaries. And if we truly believe in the power of our vote, which I believe we all do, we must ensure that we use it thoughtfully, use it thoughtfully, especially in races that directly impact our lives. Thank you.
So, good afternoon, everybody. Thank you to pass the day for that great introduction. But I'm YT Bell, and I serve as a state director for the Southern Poverty Law Center. And most people know us as a racial justice catalyst, but we're also known for defunding and bankrupting the Ku Klux Klan, is what most people know us for. But however, we have offices in Georgia, Florida, Mississippi, Louisiana, and Alabama. Our headquarters in Montgomery. And so we have, outside of the lawsuits, which we have tons of those across the states and across the country, to be honest with you, we focus on racial discrimination. And so if there is any racial discrimination, redistricting, or any that has harm on the most vulnerable population, typically we sue them. But I'm not, I'm, just give you that precursor of our word. But the other thing that I want to talk about today is democracy. And I think the two colleagues that have come before me have kind of told you what's at stake, right? And the importance of you voting down the ballot on a consistent basis. But what I'm here to say, to move your friends and family members to the ballot. Ballot. Yep. You all should raise your hand, right? Everybody on this roof should raise your hand. Want to know why? If I go to your door, you have no knowledge of who I am, you've never seen me before, how likely are you to believe anything that I say? Very likely, very unlikely, right? But if you, or you go to a friend, a neighbor, the person that you see every week at the grocery store, right? Then that person is likely to believe you. So tell me, I want to ask y'all a question. So this will be interactive. I know this is a town hall, but I like to make this interactive, so people can use it in real time. When you, do you go to the grocery store? By show of hand, who goes to the grocery store every week? Everybody. Majority of the people in here. Majority of the people in here. Twice a week, so it's relational organizing. What I mean by that is that that is the best opportunity to either have on a T-shirt that says, "Make sure you go vote," or maybe even a T-shirt that says, "Vote down the ballot." Because the same people that you see every week. So by show of hand, how many of y'all see the same people every week when you go to the grocery store? They know you're gonna be there, you're gonna be there, they're gonna be there, right? And they see you and trust you a lot more than they would trust me if I came and knocked at their door. And that's a part of relational organizing. So these are a couple of things I want to leave here with y'all, with y'all knowing. The last day to early vote is October, I'm sorry, the last day to vote to register is October 7th, right? So if you have friends that moved, changed their last name, or got married, make sure that they have went online. It's pretty simple. If they go to my voter page, mvp.sos.ga.gov, and look there to vote a registration. Also, I don't know how many people know this, but you can pull your sample ballot now. To the point of my colleagues before that spoke, you can go ahead and pull and do a lot of education on the candidates, right? Do your own research before. And you can actually take even that ballot with you to go vote. You don't have to leave it in the car. You just can't take your phone in there and text. But if you want to print out the sample ballot that's connected to your my voter page, you're more than welcome to take that in there. That way you don't have to memorize who you need to vote for, how. Because there's just too much at stake, right? Colleagues before talked about education. How many of y'all know that Georgia has defunded education for like the last two decades? What I mean by that is the QBE, which is an equation that says, hey, based off of how many people you have in classroom, the education gap, also the, by millions, and millions of dollars, so, right? And I think that lack of education is a pipeline of poverty. So that's one of the issues that we cover here at the SPLC, the Southern Poverty Law Center. Poverty is in our name. We want to eradicate poverty. But education is that through line. How many of y'all know that in Fulton County, there have been, in the last couple of weeks, six letters that went out that said, hey, we're gonna close the school? So they actually have been on the news. Well, they're closing schools in areas where, quite frankly, are some of the most vulnerable population. If you close that school, the next school is two miles away. So if I'm a mom and I have maybe one or two jobs, and I also don't have somebody else to take that kid to school, then what's the likelihood of that child making the school? Very unlikely. But that is what's happening right here in Fulton County. How many of y'all know that down the ballot, y'all have special elections specifically in Fulton County? Y'all have several. You have some special elections, you have some constitutional amendments, you have state legislature, you have your county commission, I think there's a county commission race on there, and you have some local municipality races and some local taxes, right? Which mean that they could increase your taxes to the point about miller rate. And so as an elected official, that's a, you know, that's a contentious issue around miller rate. However, some of the things have to be happened, because you have to balance it out, right? But nobody really wants their taxes to increase. However, if you do not vote and make sure that you understand the constitutional amendments that are on there, because there's one about a tax court, which is a whole nother convoluted process. However, it's on there in a way that makes it seem like it's needed or accessible, but you do know that as taxpayers, you're gonna pay for that, right? So this is your opportunity to, one, vote on the issues at stake, education is at stake, healthcare is at stake, I mean, everything, gun violence is at stake, the impact of a potential Project 2025. And I don't talk about Project 2025 from the nine hundred pages that it is. I talk about it from everyday impact. How many of y'all know somebody or have had to work overtime? Yeah. So what, one of the provisions says in the dissertation mandates is that overtime will be basically outlawed. How many of y'all have a job that has OSHA requirements? Right. It's there to keep you safe and protected, right? Well, the mandate will also remove OSHA requirements and put lots of folks at home. And that's, quite frankly, even happened in the southern part of this state, where lots of folks still work in cotton fields, and there are, there are no heat protections for them, there are a lack of insurance based off of who they work for and their employer. And that mandate only removes more of that, right? So it's too much at stake for you to stay, but stay at home, right? And to the point of my colleague before, most of these elections are won by a very, very small margin, right? So it's about thirty people in here. So if thirty people contacted five people, that's a hundred and fifty people, right? If that hundred and fifty people contacted five people, that is... Who said it? Seven hundred and fifty, correct. So seven hundred and fifty times five, right? Keep doing the math and utilizing that piece, you could have some of the margins of these, these elections that are won. It's just that simple, right? I think that y'all are the best messenger, because you're a trusted messenger. And I don't even think, I know that you're the best messenger, to move your folks along. So one of the things that I want to leave here with as far as CTAs and calls to action is that I am urging you all to make a post, to say, hey, just check your voter registration and leave the link. Also urging people to show up to vote early. Early voting starts on October 15th. Tell your folks, do not wait until November 5th to go vote, right? Vote early, because of, I'm sure y'all have all seen, a lot of the changes that we are pushing back on as it relates to the election board, right? Changing the rules. So let me tell you a little bit of why that's happening, right? Well, y'all know, I'm sure. But a lot of that is happening because there's a provision around lack of certification of the election. Well, if it's in an investigation, can you certify an election? No, you can't. So I don't know how many of y'all heard, but last cycle, there were lots of delay of certification. That delays the outcome of the election and who wins. And we saw that go a couple of years ago, quite frankly, with the Bush and Gore election in Florida, where it went to the courts, and the courts decided basically who won and not the people. So all, if you're coming to church, right? How many of y'all go to the movies or go out to eat at the church? Typically. Maybe, sometimes, yeah, a few of y'all, right? So take your whole family and say, hey, before we go out to eat, we're gonna stop at this voting location, we're gonna vote together. So studies show that more people are engaged in voting when they go as a group, and not when it's a single, it seems like a, like an activity or things, right? And so I urge people, if you're going to the movies on Friday and early voting has already opened, before you go to that movie, you all stop at the voting booth, vote. The lines are likely not gonna be long during the week, and then you go ahead. Because the other thing is, we actually have less ability to vote and access to the ballot in 2024 than we had in 2022 and in 2020. Right, very devastating, right? But that's all because of census data. So I'm also a data wonk in addition to all those other things. And so there are trends that you can show that the new American majority is black and brown. And so with them being the majority, there are some people that hold power and have hold power in a lot of these elections that don't look like them, that are scared, that those individuals may take their spot, right? But a couple of things, I urge you to pull your ballot, your sample ballot before the election. Just print it out, look at every name on there, do your own research of who the person is, and go align with the issues that you care about. So if you care about education, you care about healthcare, you care about voting rights, make sure those individuals align with your values, right? And then I also urge you to either maybe the social justice chair and the committee can come up with a shirt that you can wear when you go grocery shopping that says, "Hey, make sure that you take..." I'm giving you other work, Jennifer, sorry about that. But just as an act of action, right? I also urge you to use the platforms that you have. If you're in group chats, right? Send a group chat and say, "Hey, we're going to vote on Friday. Do you want to join us?" And you will be surprised at how many people would want to go with you. So it doesn't seem like an isolated event. In my other hat, I also urge you to start going to your school board and city council meeting. To the point, my colleague before me, there are tons of things that are happening and are moving in these local elections, and they really impact you, from your roles, to your water, to your cost of living, to the taxes that you pay. All of those things are happening, and the real reality is, not enough people come to those elections and so, I mean, not enough people come to those meetings, and I'm speaking from my own experience. And so whoever the majority is rolls the vote, and that's typically how it's done. They get no pushback, even if you can't go to those meetings. Send an email, like at them on social media. I'm sure they live somewhere in your community. Go to their houses. All of my information is public knowledge, and you will be surprised. If my lights on in my house, people think that I'm awake, and they just knock on my door. I don't know why. But sometimes I'm awake, sometimes I'm not. But these are people, regular, everyday people, just like you are. So don't be afraid because they have a title. They work and they are supposed to be responsible to you and your needs. And so you got to hold them accountable though, because everybody is not going to do everything that you think is best, right? Without a little push sometimes. So I say all that to say, a couple of things. Educate yourself, educate your friends and your family members. Find a way to relational organize, even if it's a QR code that you put on the back of your phone. And so when you're going into the grocery store, it can be the QR code there for free. And you could put the SOS, the My Voter Page, and just stick it to the back of your phone, and then you can walk around the store and say, "Hey, you know, I'm planning on voting soon. Did you vote?" And they say, "Oh, I didn't know how to find that." You say, "Oh, just scan this," right? Just for this timeframe. The other thing is get your T-shirts. I have T-shirts, you get a lot of T-shirts when you go to different things. Make sure you get a T-shirt that says, "I'm a voter," and then there's a way. Or get some creative. They're pretty inexpensive, especially if y'all go in together. And then the other thing is make calls, right, to family and friends. You're already going to call them. How many of y'all called folks just to make sure that they were safe after the weather? Well, that's at stake too, because there in Project 2025 also says they want to remove that free service as you being able to even check the weather, right? Devastating, right? So too much is at stake, but you could call all your friends and family members right before early vote and say, "Hey, I just want to remind you," because oftentimes people say they didn't vote because they forgot, or it wasn't on their schedule, or they couldn't remember. I mean, even y'all here, right? If early voting had started, I would say, "Right after this, you go get your food and everybody go to the voting poll." And then make sure you're holding people accountable, maybe on your social media, say, "Hey, where's your peach? Did you post your peach to say that you voted?" I mean, lots of things, because remember, people that care about you, you have to let them know that you're voting not for me right now or for the current state of thing, but you're voting for the future. If you have nieces, nephews, or children, or your children have children, that's why you vote. You don't vote for things to change instantly, because that's not how democracy works, unfortunately, right? The bureaucracy behind a lot of stuff that we deal with on a day-to-day basis takes time. So I just want to be honest and transparent with that process. But you vote to make sure that you have representation that operates in a way that puts your values and your issues at the forefront. So I've said a lot. I want you to educate yourselves. I want you to educate your friends. I want you to relational organize all the time, at church, at the grocery store, at a concert, all the things that you, at the movies, all the things that you do. I want you to make sure that you're making people aware that we only have a short period of time, and we want people to go vote early because of potential of some of the things that we're going to see at state. And there is now a rule that anybody can challenge anybody who voted and why. So that's not even making it any even more challenging, and it can be discouraging, especially for first-time voters that have been challenged, right? But we're going to do everything in our power to ensure that everybody's ballot is counted, does election protection at my office. So I want you to educate yourselves, I want you to relational organize, and I want you to vote early. Is everybody clear on that? Can everybody in this room commit to doing those things? By show of hands? See, we're all in this. We just got to urge our friends and family members who may be hesitant, feel hesitant about the process to do the same thing. So thank you for your time. I've overtalked. I appreciate you. Thank you. Well, they're written in a way so you don't understand them. There was an amendment a couple of years ago on education that looked good on the output, but was going to have a detrimental impact on public school. So there are a few organizations that do overview of the amendments. So I would look into the League of Women Voters, who does a great, like Voter Guide, Vote 411. And they'll have an explanation of what the actual amendment does and make it in layman's terms, to be honest with you. But there's also, you can go to faces like Fair Fight, who do a good job of explaining it. The People's Agenda, they also do a good job of explaining what those amendments are and what potential is on your ballot. But if you go to the League of Women Voters, they usually going to have a voter guide on there that's going to give any more explicit information as it relates to the constitutional amendments that are on the ballot. Yeah, no problem. Any other questions? Yes, ma'am. Yes. The best sources? So there are tons of sources. My suggestion is, so there is a coalition actually in the state of Georgia called Pro Georgia. So it consists of about 100 organizations. So you have to find the folks that are local to you, that you actually trust as your best sources. But if it was me on local candidates, I would probably, so that's the problem. So you just asked a question that's a problem. There's not a lot of information as it relates to local candidates being on there that's nonpartisan, and that is not partisan. But I would say look into Voter Guide, like the League of Women Voter. So Vote 411 has like a list, but also pulling your sample ballot, Vote 411? 411? It'll have some explanations there, but there are individual organizations that focus on certain races based off where they are. So like in Fulton, you could get it at like Civic ATL. They may have an explanation, and they actually do like videos and content. But my, my suggestion to you is, is to look, pull out your sample ballot, and then actually look those folks up, and then also do a little bit more research on their background of issues, but also what they have. A lot of those candidates that maybe even top tier have a lot of money, but have never done anything that's actually going to move people forward, but they have enough money to like send you 5,000 mailers and knock on your door. And those are typical people that want, but you want a candidate that has a good balance of experience, but also even has a team. Maybe they're not just experienced in a certain area, but they have a team that, that can kind of help with those issues and move them along. But you were going to add anything?
I brought the microphone so people can ask questions in here for the people online. But I would also suggest, if there are issues that are important to you, look for organizations that represent those issues. Like if environmental issues are important to you, you can look at who is the Sierra Club endorsing? Who is Georgia Conservation Voters endorsing, things like that? And that's where you're really going to find, you, you take those top issues, you find out who, which organizations are endorsing which candidates, and that helps to tip you off as well. They will endorse local. They absolutely will.
Some races. So they are part of the coalition I was speaking above, Pro Georgia, right? It's about where their membership is and if they're going to endorse there. But they don't endorse in all the races. So yes, you're right, right? Go into the groups and the issues that you care about, but they may or may not have an endorsement, but they also may have a social media, or I can connect it to some of the executive directors in those organizations, and they can tell you how they feel about it, right? From that perspective, even if they don't have an endorsement, and it could be their board, right? Some of them want to endorse in these areas, but it's also about how much impact they're actually going to have if they do the endorsement. If, if, if some of these groups, like you mentioned, Sierra Club, which is more on the ground, but like Environment Georgia or Georgia Conservation Voters have not done work specifically there, but these people are good on their issues, they may not endorse, but they may support them in other way. I don't want that to limit you if you don't see an endorsement. However, that is a good start. So I would suggest everybody in here go to Pro Georgia website. And so Pro Georgia is the coalition, the C-3 Coalition in the state, has over 100 partners there. You've seen a lot of them. You just didn't know they were part of this larger coalition. And then identify from that group, who are those organizations that you care about, you've seen, you trust, and then go and look at them, and then just reach out to them. A lot of them have local staff that are on the ground, that are really, really easy to contact and to get more information from. But yes, endorsement, yes, but some of them may not endorse in local races just because it's not advantageous for them. And I only can say that as a local candidate. The people that I want to endorse, they didn't want. But I will say this, the unions, if there are any local unions here in the area, I think SEIU may be out here, trying to think of who else. The unions usually endorse despite where you are. And so they're a good starting point as far as getting more information. But that's a challenge, especially for local races. They're just not these big-ticket races. People don't have enough money because they're thinking about top of the ticket. By the time they get down to the bottom of the ticket, what am I going to be able to give them? Which is the sad part, because these local races have more impact, my colleagues point before, than a lot of these state legislators and some of the top of the ticket. Some of these people you've never seen before.
Is there any, is there any way we can do anything about the Election Board even next year?
Well, yes. So right now there are letters that are being sent to the Election Board, showing up to the Election Board, because see, that's the real reality. People know if they show... So they meet, yeah, virtually. You can go virtually or you can go in person. However, there are limitations on how long they let people speak. They have their own rules. But the problem is not enough people show up until something happens like this, and not on a consistent basis to hold them accountable. But you can write letters. There's a whole election protection board. My organization, the Southern Poverty Law Center, have wrote letters. They've talked to the media. I think the biggest thing that you can do now to have most impact is to talk to your friends and family members about what's at stake due to the changes, and urge them to quite frankly show up early because we know that there are going to be a lot of challenges. We also know that that's going to delay the certification, and we also know that that's going to have an impact on who's able to turn out and feel comfortable turning out. There was another question here and then here. Wait, I think he had a question. Bob?
So yesterday I went out door-to-door campaigning in one of the neighborhoods right near here. And we had a couple that kind of chased us down in the neighborhood and complained about the fact that we were going door-to-door campaigning, you know, citing the no solicitation of their neighborhood. It seems like there's quite a bit of misinformation in terms of what our legal rights are when we're campaigning. I don't know if you want to comment on that.
Yep, so political campaigning is not solicitation. So if anybody says that to you, you say, "Hey, that's not true." I can tell you, and you might have been talking about it from a nonpartisan way of, "Hey, I just want to make sure that you're registered and that you turn out," right? And so that is not against the law. You can go to as many doors as you would like to with literature. And I think the best way to disprove some of that is if you had literature. Yes, that is true. So people here know of them. But if you go to ACLUGeorgia.org, you can find the canvasser's rights. And you can just take that with you. If you feel more comfortable that way, as soon as they say it, you can say, "No, it is not." And then you can get them to read it. And it has also, it cites the state law and why this is not solicitation.
Yes, hi. Is this working?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't understand why it's, there's not, maybe say Democrats have a site, you know, that lists the different people in my county, whatever. Why it's so difficult? Why, like if I wasn't here today, I wouldn't know to go look at the women voters. Like people don't know where to go. When I first moved here, I didn't know any candidates at all. I didn't know where I was supposed to go to vote. I showed up at Newtown Park, thinking that's where I was supposed to go, and then, oh, I'll take a chance. I'll go to Dalvin Elementary. It, I don't understand why there's not, Democrats have, make it easier for people, you know, rather than us having to go to all of these, because I think a lot of people aren't wanting to do that. You know, so it just, I, I, I just wish it was, maybe there's a 711 number you want to find, you know, like an easy number that the general public would know. I call here to find out where I go, who my candidates are, so I, they're all on one list, so I could, with their website attached, I could look up them. It just seems like it, an organization should be able to do that, to help us.
Yeah, that's how I would give you Georgia Vote 411. So they do that. But there's a site that you have to go through. Women, the League of Women Voters have been doing it for years, but it has all the candidates usually on there, and it gives you like a little blurb. Now, the problem is, they reach out sometimes to candidates and ask them for more information, or they do interviews. But you're right, there is not a, now, so this is a nonpartisan event. But this is what I'll say, that there should be somebody even giving you a phone call, or there should be a database that's provided to you in your specific county with that information. So you can reach out to them if you would like to, to find out who maybe they are endorsing, or maybe they, maybe they heard about. But I think the best bet is to go through an organization that you either are part of or that you know of, right? Like if you care about conservation, sustainability issues, then Georgia Conservation Voters is going to tell you, everybody's on their radar, and it's usually on their website, and they have like a little small blurb about them. Because even trying to explain to my colleagues point before about the Public Service Commission, do y'all know that that has an impact on your insurance? How many of y'all's car insurance has went up in the last year? Well, that's the Public Service Commission. Your utility bills? How many of y'all has went up? That's the Public Service Commission. But because of their name and like the lack of education that's centered around what they actually do, that's why people don't participate in those elections and they don't show up. Because the real reality is your electricity bill is going up because you're paying for a plant called Plant Vogel, because it's a nuclear plant. Nobody wants nuclear in their community, but it's smack back in the middle of a community that likely could have an impact on cancer and all the other things that could be harmful for folks. But that's what you're paying for. But as it relates to having a specific site, I would suggest you go to Georgia 411. It will have an outline, but also reach out to your county representative for your particular association or party, and they should be able to explain to you who they're endorsing.
How about when I get the postcards in the mail from each candidate? I never know which one's a Republican, which one's a Democrat, ever. I never know. And how about then, on the postcards that they send out, they put, go to the site if you're interested in finding on the postcard or a phone number to call? Not allowed to say they're Republicans or Democrats? I don't understand why.
Well, that's, well, that's because there are studies that show that the average voter does not associate themselves with their party, but they fall in the middle. And so that, that's a strategy, if I'm being honest with you, to kind of get everybody in the middle that may not align to actually vote for them. I think a colleague before mentioned that that was one of the approaches that was done right here in Fulton County, where the individual is an R, however, showed up as a D. That's also a tactic too, when they realize that they were losing in certain races. They say, "Hey, we'll just switch what party we're in, but when we show up, we'll vote a certain way" that's completely disaligned with what the people want them to. So that's another, it's a, it's a tactic and a strategy. But this is what I'll tell you, Rocky. Look at the bottom of that postcard. It has to have a disclaimer there. Look at that disclaimer. It's going to be very small print. It's probably in your far right or your far left. It should tell you who paid for, and that could be indications on where they fall on your issue. But I would also suggest that you do, just pull the sample ballot. You're going to get tons of postcards. That's how they do. They... They overwhelm you right before. So you take all your mail and you just go to the ballot and you don't, you say, hey, this is what I saw. Because remember, winning an election is about visibility and name recognition. How many times I've seen it over and over again? That's a tactic, right? The strategy there is to see your name enough so when you get to the ballot, you don't forget their name and that's what you scratch. But you haven't done any of the research on their issues that you care about, that they're actually going to fix or solve or have fixed or solved. I mean, remember, some people vote because of what people have done. Some people vote because of people, what they think people can do. But you have to be able to assess that yourself to identify if people actually can do the things they're said are going to do and if the position allows them to, if it's in their jurisdiction or if it's in their means of power. Lots of people give stuff on a county level, on a city council level. They don't have the oversight to change or to fix, right? And so that means doing due diligence. I think that means also having kitchen table conversations. So if you have big dinners at your family, with your family, y'all all can sit around and talk through what's on the ballot. Who is this person? Everybody gives a little bit of information. You're way more informed than you were before. Because here's the real reality. The real reality is the average voter has a fourth grade reading level. And most of the candidates that have lots of money, that are dumping stuff in your mailbox, they're hoping that you are not going to do your own research, that you're not going to be educated, that you're going to see their names and big billboards enough times that that's what you're going to go vote for. And the real reality is, that's what people do. Unfortunately. I mean, I'm with you and I think that that's why I think y'all are here. Because you're already, you want to inform more people. You want people to be more educated. Now, some of that work falls on us. Like I make sure that, I make sure that all my family members print out their sample ballot. And then we go through line by line because we all live in different counties of who they vote so that they're prepared. And then I say, hey, this is what I know about this candidate. I've done a little research. This is what I found out. I think you should vote for this. So it's not even this overwhelming process, but then that means that that's the importance of relational organizing. That's the importance of bothering them, doing the work yesterday by knocking doors so that people will say, hey, this is important. Because I think you have to make this stuff real to people's lives and the impact it's going to have on their everyday life. People are losing out on money. Streets are not fixed. Sidewalks are not there. Money is not pumped into education like it should be and all that's because people are not showing up to the ballot. And keep showing them that how Georgia was only flipped by a little bit over 11,000 votes. That's a very, very small margin of folk. You probably have more 11,000 people to come to this congregation. If all of them would have showed up, that, that could change the trajectory of, wait, do we have more 11,000 people? No. Well, maybe you and the congregation next door get together and there may be 11,000 people, right? But it might be more than 11,000 people in here, right? And so it's just a small margin. That seems like a very big number, but it's very, very small when you think about Georgia has 159 counties. And so the real reality is, to the point, most candidates lose by between 5,000 and 10,000 votes, which is if you do five and everybody knows five people, it could easily close in that gap.
Do look for who these postcards and mailings are paid for by. It's a big red flag if that is not listed. And I know there are some recent mailings that went out that did not list who it's paid for by. And the other thing is, is I encourage you to do the majority of that research during the primaries and get people out to vote in the primaries. Part of the reason why we end up with such divisive candidates in our general election is because they're able to speak to those who are coming out in the primaries. And usually the people coming out in the primaries are those that have more radical views, right? And so they're talking to those people. That's how they get on the stage. That's how they get in the general election and that's how they make their way to being our representatives. I just cannot stress enough the importance of primaries.
Primaries are definitely very important. Turnout is super low. If you thought the general was low, primaries are even lower because people just don't think about it. Also primaries are not at the best time. Usually most of your primaries in May. In May, you're thinking about summer trip. Is, I mean, people say democracy doesn't work, but that's because they don't vote in primary because that is the actual time to identify who's the best candidate that meets your needs before they even go to the general. Because in the general, you just kind of get to pick whatever's left, truth be told. You don't get to make a decisive decision if there are 15 candidates, but you do get to do that in the primary. And the other thing I'll say, if you're getting postcards that do not have a disclaimer on it, there's an ethics office. That is a big fine, right? Because you have to ensure that everybody has a disclaimer to ensure where it comes from and they sign the ethics clause as a candidate, that they will follow all ethics rules and that's one of them. So if you have some that are not, you take a photo of it, you can email it to ethics, you can even call up there and say, hey, these people are not being compliant. They will go to an ethics court and they will decide from there. But that also shows you that those may be not the candidates that you want to vote for. They can't even follow candidate rules from actions of what you want.
Thank you so much. I just have a statement, actually, not a question so much. County commissioners are super important in the county and all the commissioners in Gwinnett anyway, and I'm sure people in the neighborhood can, can sit on. I've been sitting on a historical restoration and preservation for years. Moving the Confederate monument for we also did a soil collection for a lynching victim and had a historical marker installed. So you can actually do things. Just get involved. Go to your county commissioner's website, see if there's a board you're interested in and do it.
So that's a valid point and thank you for bringing that statement up. So everybody does not want to run and be an elected official. I'll be honest with you. I didn't. I ran at 26, seven and a half years later. What I saw was that majority of our population was trending younger, but our council members were 70 and 80 years old, which has no problem. But when the median age is 13 to 35, you need representation that looks like you to make sure your voices are lifted or your needs are lifted. And so that's why we ran. We've ran as the first millennial council in the country. And there was four of us under 30. And we were able to get lots of things done, but now I serve in the minority. Things are a lot tougher now. I can't get anything done without a little negotiation, which waters down any legislation I'm moving on. But what I will say, most county, most cities have, bless you, have advisory boards. So it's historic preservation. If you care about arts, there's one. Downtown development authorities that happen to do with economic development. We have some on community development, civic participation. So all these boards exist. Now, I'll be honest with you. They are the most challenging to fill, but those are the individuals, quite frankly, that make the recommendations that we actually vote on as elected officials. And it's challenging to get people to be on those board, but that's where you can get your voice heard and change the trajectory of your community as a whole. And so if you haven't heard about them, they have them on the local level, they have them in the school board. They have them on a county level. They have them at every level because we're supposed to be a democracy and we're supposed to get input from regular, everyday citizens. So even if you ran for an office and didn't win, don't think that your time to serve is up, right? Run for an advisory board. You don't even have to run because usually there are 15,000 positions and we don't have four people that keep coming in that keep, and some of them pay. So one of the things that we do in the city of Clarkson to make sure it's equitable process and we get a good pool of people is actually we pay people for that time. $50 an hour, right? For them to come and serve on planning and zoning. How many of y'all know what the planning and zoning board is? You should run for planning and zoning, right? So planning and zoning is, so I'm a planner by license and trade, but essentially everything from the building to the lot size, to what is appropriate for a zoning type is approved in that meeting. So when you talk about business license, that also goes to planning and zoning. They're actually the first approval before it even gets to my desk for me to vote on it. They give me a list of recommendations. So if you're not on the board, that's what I'm saying, you need to get on the board, right? All right, so you can make the recommendation and stop it, full stop in that committee because it won't even come to me, right? Because I have all my trust in the board that I have appointed, which is why all of y'all should run for, you don't even have to run, just apply, right? Just apply. Apply in your county for a board. If you like art, apply for art, right? You can build murals. There's money that's allocated usually according to the city or according to the county. And planning and zoning, we just need their help because we don't have enough planning staff for all of the things that we get in the state, the city. But even doing our zoning rewrite, they help with the charrettes. They engage community around what it means to have multi-use development, more commercial, the tax basis, because I think that's another misconception. People think that you build more houses, you have more tax pay. Property tax is the lowest tax. We need more commercial development. That actually is a higher tax. That actually pays for a lot of the services that you have. But also school board. If you live by a school, you probably pay an esplas. That is an education tax that only goes to that school. But that's come from your property tax as well. So taxation, I think there's even a board for that. I have one on public safety and legal. If you have a legal issue or concern, you feel like people are being discriminated against, I get to chair public safety and legal in all respects. So sometimes even a committee goes into businesses and they have a noise ordinance. That's a public safety issue, right? So you have so much oversight. Yes. Question?
Yeah, thank you. Just a quick, because it got brought up a couple of times. And Rocky, thank you so much because I think that your comment is something that we've talked about for a long time. It's like, it's just not easy, even when you are an engaged citizen to get the information that you need. So hopefully wink, wink, because we're in a church setting. You have lots of friends that can help with some of those things because we can't send it out via church. I had one comment about what we were talking about, about them being clear about who has endorsed what when they're sending out mailers. What we learned in Roswell from the last, last fall, I guess it was, that actually in state elections, that is true and you do have recourse when you go to the voter elections board. If it, in the state of Georgia, if it is a local election, it is not illegal for them to send things in the mail that doesn't show where it's paid for. And we went to the point of reaching out to Office Depot, who is where things were getting dumped in our mailboxes here in Roswell that did not show who it was coming from, which had our mayor's face on it, saying that he had it. So that is something I believe needs to, to many points that were brought up here, that's something that needs to be changed in law. There's only a few states, we learned in the country, that would allow that. Georgia is one of them. And there's a reason for that, right? They want to be able to sway our elections in that way. So there's lots of work to be done. I don't want to leave on a negative note, but those are things we wouldn't know until it actually affected us. Like it's shocking that we'd even have to fight for that. So thank you so much for all the information today because I think we've learned a lot. So thanks.
I want to thank everybody for, for staying. Thank you YT for coming and educating us. We do have the results of the election next door. Tell us what happened.
Is everyone familiar with the election that we did over there? So we, we recently built a playscape. Us and the, the school that rents the building from us. And so Social Justice signed up to do a multi-gen today and we were wondering how we could make it. And so they voted on the name of the playscape. And the results are undetermined and we will have to have a runoff.
All right, there's food next door so we can move there. And thank you to the streaming team for making this available.
Well, they started after filing and then they did a primary. The kids from the school did their own.
So did y'all get some votes?